All right, I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular reading of the Board of Trustees of East Central District of Lincoln on March nineteenth, twenty twenty. Ms. Morgan Antos and you call the roll.
Yes, sir. I'm going to follow my camera. How does it go?
President.
Victor Gardner.
President.
James Mulkey.
Here.
Monique Preston.
Yes.
Steve Bryant.
Here.
Mr. President, may I have a form?
Thank you very much, Ms. Morgan Antos. Move on to item two, prayer and pledge. Mr. Stone.
Sir.
This is for you. Will you pray, please?
Dear my Father, we thank you for the many blessings that you have given us. We thank you for your Son, Jesus, and his sacrifice for us. We thank you for these servants that have gathered here tonight to meet their service for the students, the staff, and the parents of the district. Father, we ask for strength and perseverance as we continue our work through these difficult times. We pray for those who have fallen ill and for those who are tending to the sick. We pray for those who are struggling physically, mentally, or spiritually, and that they turn to you for comfort. Father, we pray that you continue to watch over us and that the things that are done and said here tonight are taken unto you in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Good job. Please hand the pledge to the ladies. All right, Texas.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now Texas. Pledge, honor the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, one individual.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Move on to item three, awards and recognition. Mr. Stone.
Yes, sir, trustees, we had Teacher of the Year recognitions scheduled for tonight, but because of our current circumstances, we rescheduled those for our May meeting, which is where we do our employee service award. Of all things, workout, we'll combine those employee recognitions during that evening's party.
All right, looks like we have any public comments. Move on to item five, superintendent's report. Item A, personnel, Mr. Stone.
Sir, trustee, we have a couple of employees who are active in this month's report other than Madison, very, very inactive as to this case this time of year. Any further information that you would like regarding any of the items in the personnel report, which is on page eight, electronic packet, please let me know.
Item B, Transportation Department update, Mr. Stone.
Sir, trustees, in your electronic packet on page ten, you'll see the slide deck for the Transportation Department. Their intention tonight is to provide me your update for the board and for, again, the circumstances, we asked them to stay home tonight. The presentation is there for you for your review. If you have any questions or need any additional information, we'll get that to you. But they really want to be in front of the board, and so if they're allowed to at any progressive and subsequent board meetings, we'll get those folks back in front of you. They'll update this report and share with the board the things that they've been doing consistent with the cascading goals of the organization with respect to their department and showcase the things that they're proud of and highlight the things that they still need to work on and tell you guys what they're doing about it. So the Transportation Department update again is in your packet. We'll get you more information, but they do intend to bring it back in front of you at some point before the end of the year.
Perfect. Okay. Item C, Custodial Department update.
Trustees, same thing for the Custodial Department update. We'll bring that to you later in the year, but the report at this stage of the year is there for your review.
All right, I'm sure with this next item, we'll have a few adjustments. Item D, upcoming events.
Trustees, all the items in your March and April calendar that are UIL can be canceled. The UIL sent notice out today that all UIL activities are suspended through May fourth. And so unless that changes, every UIL activity on your March and April calendar are canceled. We do have also a Senate Bill fifteen sixty-six update training for the board. We've had this before. It's required for two years, as we talked about in the last meeting. We'd all kind of agreed to potentially go to Region Twenty meeting. I know Miss Brazil has already had her training. And as of right now, Region Twenty is closed through April third, and should these closures extend beyond that, I wouldn't expect Region Twenty to continue to stay closed as well. So that training is likely not to happen and to be rescheduled, and if that is the case, we'll get that word out to you as soon as we have that information. Also, you'll start to see events like the National Arts Society induction April thirteenth, like the Superintendent's Student Month Ceremony on the twenty-ninth, and then thereafter, you got prom, you got graduation, you got academic achievement awards, you've got these senior trip, you've got these events that are at risk of not happening given our current context. So they're currently on the calendar because we're only closing the third is up today. But if these conditions should persist, which every indication is that it's very likely, we'll start to see these events be canceled. We'll communicate as much advance as we possibly can, where we can make different accommodations to appropriately recognize these students and families. We will. If we run out of options, we may just have to cancel out by, and that would be very, very unfortunate. We'll keep you guys posted all along the way.
So they're completely canceled here? There will be no makeup games or anything like that? Or is that just...
Yeah, so that guidance will have to come from UIL. So once they reconvene on March fourth, they'll make decisions if they even can, sorry, May fourth, what to do about the seasons that were lost, if anything. And I don't have that guidance yet.
All right.
Very much in the limo, and it's very much uncharted, water, obviously. Another thing I wanted to point out is that on April twenty-fourth was slated to be a school holiday for the Battle of Flowers, as we know Fiesta has been postponed. Should be able to come back. That could be one day if we could reconvene school to capture some instructional minutes. We'll just flag that as a possibility right now and see what happens. And then the next regularly scheduled board meeting is April sixteen, and again, our effort, if we were to have that meeting today, under today's conditions, it would be just like this. It dates escalating, and let's say that it escalates to where the community is mandated to, remanded to shelter in place kind of circumstances. The governor has sent out guidance for virtual board meetings, virtual governing body convenes, and I'm going to investigate the legality and the processes and procedures for such. It would not be our preference to do that, but if we're in a shelter in place situation and have no option, we may have to enact that procedure for conducting business, and we'll just keep you posted along the way should we get to that state. Any questions about any of that? So thank you, Mr. Massey, for pointing that out. STAR testing, as you probably heard, has all been canceled for the year. So the calendar shows that there will be no STAR testing in April or for the year for that matter. We're getting a lot of guidance about that. They clearly identify that any students who were taking a course, that had a career level, that acquired a STAR test or a D course test, that this year, it's a local decision based on grades, whether they're to be promoted, whether they're to earn credit for the course and meet those requirements for graduation in the course. And for students who were in need of retesting, we have to convene an IGC, which is a process we've had in place, where we convene the teachers of that student, faculty and staff. We would look at the whole body of work that the student has compiled to determine if they've met requirements for graduation. And so the commissioner has said it's a local decision. Follow the processes and procedures you have in place. These children will not have to make up a STAR or a D course test in the future. It's a pass for this year. If you say they passed in the local governing body, then they passed. If you say they met the requirement for graduation, then they met the requirement based on our processes and procedures. Any other questions?
Move on up. Item C, packaging. Item A, discussion or possible action regarding interlocal operation grant for the Cooperative Disciplinary Alternative Education Program. Mr. Stone.
Yes, sir, trustees, this is our agreement with Florisville ISD for the instructional services for our students to replace an alternatification environment, original justice alternative education environment. As you're all aware, we've been partners with Florisville for this particular program as well as several other districts in Wilson County for a number of years, I think about a decade. And so this is just a re-upping, if you will, the agreement. All of the costs associated remain the same. The model that they went to in the last couple of years is really working well for us. In fact, we're able to manage the cost a lot better, and in the last two years, we've gotten a really nice refund because we didn't use all of the seats that we bought in to use. And so we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about that particular program, if you have one.
How's it going up with our... Is there some that are actually... How's...
So that would not be, that would not be the Crier Center ETC. This would be temporary placement for students who got in trouble.
Question.
All right, good.
Mr. President, I recommend board approval of the interlocal cooperative agreement for Cooperative Disciplinary Alternative Education Program, DAP, with Florisville ISD and Wilson County Partners as present.
We have a recommendation from superintendent to approve the interlocal cooperation agreement for the Cooperative Disciplinary Alternative Education Program. Out of motion. Move. Motion from Mr. Victor Gardner, who has a second.
Second.
Second from Mr. James Mulkey. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Item B, construction project delivery contract and award method asphalt replacement at Sinclair Elementary.
Yes, sir. The next three items actually are items that Mr. Morgan is directly leading, and so I asked him to be here tonight and if the board had any questions and to add any additional information that I may not present. So the first item, the asphalt project at Sinclair Elementary is a project that you're all familiar with. We're ready to bring an award delivery method to you tonight for your consideration because we're ready to get that work going, being that the scope of work is going to exceed fifty thousand dollars and requires your approval. And so we are proposing to the board that we have a contract award delivery method of competitive sealed proposals to secure a contract for the asphalt replacement at Sinclair Elementary School. We'd be happy to talk a little bit more about that scope of work, the engineering involved, and the recommendations associated. This is going to essentially be a complete replacement, a very much needed complete replacement of parking lot at Sinclair.
Does there any tendency, I guess, if they can do work, of what's going on right now or...
Do we have, do we have any... Yeah, do we have any indications, Matt, that we won't be able to continue on the timeline given the current context?
So the timeline is displayed for the summer. We're going to bring it out because we want to get in line and then eat pork and eat in the summer. First thing, if the shelter in place is mandated for a longer time, if it's effective, but because asphalt is not a hot commodity for the survival of the liberal arts, it's why I think we need to...
If I'm, if Tom really too much worried about the asphalt, just people put the asphalt down.
So as long as the shelter in place, we're, we're ready to start with you. We should be all right. I don't think it's mission critical for the school to operate if we are late and push a timeline back.
So we couldn't, if it gets pushed back too far, would it be a cutoff date if we couldn't get this project done because it's cool starting? Could we work around that wild cool zone?
I think if we get to the middle of July, then we would have to make that delay.
All right, thank you.
Has there been any get from the commissioner that maybe at the time during the shutdown is going to have to be made up or school year is going to extend? School year is going to end when it was planned on, and there's no way that they're going to extend.
At this point, all indications from the commissioner are that it's over, it's over the coming.
But we shouldn't have to worry about extending the school year.
No indications at this point that that's going to be extended. President, trustees, I recommend more approval of the construction project delivery contract award method utilizing competitive sealed proposals to securing contract for asphalt replacement at Sinclair Elementary School.
Well, we have a recommendation from the superintendent to approve board approval of the construction project delivery contract award method utilizing competitive sealed proposals to securing a contract for asphalt replacement at Sinclair Elementary. Out of motion.
So move.
Motion from Mr. James Mulkey. You have a second question. Second. From the Mulkey card.
I have to separate those two.
We have a second from Steve Bryant. Any more questions? Thirrs, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Close to carry.
Give your final vote.
Item C, construction project, delivery contract, award method, construction of cast and renovation. Mr. Stone.
Yes, sir. Trustees, in your packet, you see the large print material. We had intended to have the architect, who will be overseeing the project at John Lynn, ID Cast Lead for Phase One renovations, as well as the designer who is working for him, who happens to be the designer that HEB uses, who is the designer that is responsible for the designs of Cast Tech, Cast STEM, and Cast Med as well. And so our intentions were for them together to kind of walk the board through the design concepts. Phase One that we're bringing to you tonight for consideration is really a Level One construction project. Basically means it's paint, it's finishes, it's furniture, maybe some ceiling tiles, some flooring. So it's really not any expensive construction. It's not going to trigger any very costly permitting, et cetera. And so the strategy there is that because we have a short timeline to get open before the fall, and with that aged facility, before we get into more costly renovations, we need time to really think about as a board, what is it we're willing to invest in for the long term? And is there going to be other considerations for that program or programs like it? So we have time over the next two to three years to think that through. So this just allows us to do something that's not super invasive, not super expensive. It allows us to repurpose this facility very easily later if we need to. Some highlights on the, on the design, given that the three industry sectors that Cast Lead is focused on, hospitality, tourism, e-commerce, and retail, some of the themes and the color palettes... Wow, that sounds like a designer. And the color palettes and the images, the attempt was to assimilate hospitality, tourism kind of environments, the look, the feel. You know, in Cast Med, you want it to feel like a reception area at a clinic. You know, STEM, you want it to feel like, you know, you're visiting Toyota. So that's where the color combinations came from. That's where some of the design ideas came from. What you see in the subsequent pages are actual classrooms. It will be a retrofitting with furniture, and you'll see some of the furniture. It's pretty unique. It's different. The idea with this cast school is it's very, it's project based. So the kids will very rarely be working very extended amount of time as a whole group with a teacher-directed instructional environment. They will be working in groups individually. You'll go into a classroom in Cast Lead at any point in time, and you might see six or seven things going on at one time. So every classroom is designed to have different types of configurations and different types of furniture so kids can, depending on the nature of the work that you're doing, find a space in the room to do that work. And so that's the idea. We visited all of the different cast schools in the last year, and we've seen a lot of this kind of furniture. If there's any particular furniture that you have questions about or would like for us to maybe revisit with the designer, let us know because we have time even after tonight before furniture is ordered to look a little closer into that and maybe get some other options to you. But these are the design concepts, these are the color concepts, these are preliminarily the types of furniture. The fabric on the furniture will follow the patterns that are here, not necessarily the patterns of color that you see in the designs presented. And so what we're bringing to you tonight for consideration is an award delivery method for this particular project, but this award delivery method is called a job award contract. And I'll let Mr. Morgan talk a little bit more about a job award contract and why we feel like that's an appropriate delivery, awarded delivery method for this particular project. Mr. Morgan?
So job award contracts are being awarded through a purchasing co-op, for example, by board. They went out and did formal bids on certain types of services. The reason why we're looking at a job award contract that's already meant to appear is because of the timing. Now, unlike the asphalt, which could be readily available right down the street, most of these products are coming through automation, whether it be the flooring or the furniture, and so there could be a disruption. We also would like to get in and perform the work quickly and get out so that it can be used as a recruiting tool for Dr. Fuller, so that it's going to be a little bit of unique space, and so we want her to have that ability to showcase that as the recruiting process continues. We are slated to be done with construction. It all goes to plan, June fifteenth, with furniture, furnishings coming in by the first of July, giving her a month and a half to showcase her building. It won't be a hundred percent per building, but the areas where she can concentrate personally with the Cast Lead students, the first cohort of one hundred and fifty, could really be an attractant to her students. There are several companies that have worked in the cast of the job award contract. Last summer, a company that's in our district, R.L. Brody, performed two different, actually three different tasks for us, the ECD renovations, the heritage foundation repair renovations, and then also the retrofitting of the Fraser-Cooler project there as well. The company, R.L. Brody, also has done major projects for our technology center and several asphalt projects for us the last couple of years. We think this is a good resource to use, but we are not only going to rely on them, the architect is also getting pricing from other contractors who have been awarded jobs just to make sure that the district is getting the best value for the job. So that is some of the reasons why we're asking to procure these services a little bit different than our normal vendors.
And saying that, the best luck, right, for the dollar, actually, we all continue to do, in light of current circumstances, we would need to make sure, I'm certain, that it's not only durable, you know, that can clean them and all those kinds of things that make it normally so aware of, and I realize it has to be aesthetically compacted, but also the durability that we're looking at because we may have to spend a little bit deeper than how, how people like to clean and all of those kinds of things. Yes, ma'am?
No, ma'am. The plan is pending. Tonight's decision is to send the architectural plans to the different job award companies, and they need, they said around two weeks to get the pricing back.
And then, we're saying that our first cohort of students at one hundred and fifty, what's the result that's looking like?
We're between sixty and eighty students so far, which we think is, seems a little slow, but this time of year, we haven't really started the registration process. She doesn't have a facility to showcase.
Right.
It's not approved or concept yet. They had an open house, it's trying to be virtually now. It was going to be another opportunity for families or prospective families to come in, meet some of our industry partners, learn about the kind of experiences they're going to have in this particular school environment, and further inform themselves about whether they want to apply and consider going to this particular campus, but they're not going to be able to do that yet. So it's, and we also have had a, Dr. Fuller has had a marketing and recruitment drive planned for East Central to Wilson County that she was intending to do in March and April, which is up in the air right now. So given all of that, we think that had nothing changed, we might have been on track to get close to that hundred and twenty, hundred and fifty cohort size for year one. Right now, I'm not so sure, but either way, we think that we'll have a decent sized cohort. What we learned from the other cast schools is year one was tough to get cohort in, and then one word out straight pretty quick, and then subsequent years seem to be a lot better.
And we were going to try to do this after tonight, when they did after running, or you know, the facility to showcase by...
If all goes to plan, construction is due, be completed June fifteenth, and then another two weeks for construction. Part of the package, also the Cast needs incorporated is correct wall graphics to really make it stand out and to incorporate into the industry that they're trying to. She has a few graphics on page one as an example. She's, the interior designer specializes in these aspects.
Awesome. It's too bad she didn't have it. Easter and summer, so if we're talking about it right now, and the kids got sent and signed up, and you wouldn't have had anything to look at until Easter and summer, so you wouldn't have had anything to go to. So they're signing up blind, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, so she's done recruitment with counselors as they did choice slip conversations at the junior highs. They've been to different events in the community. Every time any of the campuses have an event, have a table set up, and they're talking to families, et cetera, you know, and then advertising digitally and on social media, which you probably see some of those. What we hope also is once we get a little further down the road here, that they can put some design boards up and you can display on easels there and at the high school and at the junior highs where they can kind of get a three-dimensional kind of feel for what, you know, it's going to look like, the graphics and the colors and the furniture and such, so just the best they can to give these kids a feel of what it's going to be. And then the open house, I mean, if they get to have that at some point, it'd be a real big deal for them to get to interface with some of these industry partners because they're corporate leaders in those sectors who, you know, I think really get some families and some kids who are excited that this is no joke, this is for real. And there are some real good opportunities for the students and staff.
One more thing to add, on the second page, those five classrooms are currently occupied. So even if school was to resume, they could do construction while school is going on. The second page, currently those three classrooms are also occupied, that's the main piece of John Lynn. And then on the fourth page, that's the office and the library, that were currently occupied, but there are plans to have those evacuated and so... Those are currently occupied, but there are plans to have those evacuated and so construction. Also, another plan is furniture will be separate from this. So we plan to come back to the board with the whole.
So we're going to have my life?
Uh, the front office, it's our CTE administration, so Dr. Fuller, the director of CTE and the district nurse, the area nurse. Which she'll remain there next year. And then the other two administrative person.
Yeah, we're retrofitting a portable into the one behind the scoreboard on the asphalt, the old low crest basketball court. There's a portable there that'll be their office, so the front office can be available for construction to happen, we're relocating them. The library is currently occupied, not by students or anything, but by furniture, usually evacuated. And then the second page, Mr. Morgan was talking about, those five classrooms, that's the wing at John, the old John Glenn that is closest to the central police department. There is currently no students assigned, it's available for us to get into now. And if the construction were to extend for whatever reason, given our current climate, they can continue to work while school is in session. And then the three classrooms on the third page, Mr. Morgan was referring to, do have currently some great technology teachers in them. Mr. McKay has already assigned classrooms for for next year in another area, so. Those, the only three classrooms are actually occupied.
Sorry, those three classrooms are unoccupied.
Oh, they're currently unoccupied?
As well as the five?
So they're all, they're all unoccupied?
Everything that they're occupied.
Okay, I didn't realize those three were not occupied.
With the exception of the two offices on the third page, that's Dr. Fuller's office and her assistant.
Got it, thank you for that correction. So all the classrooms are unoccupied, so nobody has to be relocated for year one? Thank you for that. Anything else? All right, Mr. President, I recommend board approval of the construction project, delivery, contract, award method utilizing job order contracting cooperative method of construction procurement with Casmed renovations added. So we have a recommendation to recommend that the superintendent to approve the construction project, delivery, contract, award, Casmed renovations, without a motion? A motion from, from all of our examples, second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Garza. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
All opposed? Most passes. We call to item D. Polls for local retail merchants, which is done. Sir, Mr. Maxine O, this particular item is referring to an option that we'd like the board to consider for staff to procure supplies. Essentially Walmart provides the best value, but Walmart is not a part of a purchasing cooperative which delays the procurement process for supplies. This work, we talked a little bit more about this, but essentially what we are trying to do, that other districts have been able to do with Walmart, given that they do not, they do not participate traditional purchasing cooperatives, is to ask for proposals for the kinds of supplies that we want to purchase from Walmart, review those proposals, make sure that they're of good value, which they are, and they're very competitive and help improve to be a better value than other competitors. Then essentially, the warning may be incorrect, we'll let Mr. Morgan correct me. But essentially we're creating a local cooperative with Walmart for the procurement of supplies. And we're identifying specifically the Walmart on Rigsby and the Walmart at Brook City Base area. So this would only apply to purchases by the district for supplies at those two Walmarts so that we can expedite the procurement process and assure that we give the best value for those supplies. It wouldn't apply to any other Walmart in the area, so Mr. Morgan, if there's anything to clarify or correct, please do.
It's a little, it's a little bit different, it's not necessarily created in our local agreement with Walmart. It's basically a reporting, we have a proposal, like if we were going out for construction proposal. These two Walmarts responded with their proposal and reporting of them so that we can see that they've cost a lot of pressure. For whatever reason Walmart has, has not, will not participate in a person co-op, even though SANS has and their sister companies, HEB has. And so we're able to oversee the 50,000 threshold with them, because they have. Last year we had to cut off all POs of Walmarts about this time as we were reaching that 50,000 threshold. We were getting close again to reaching that 50,000 with over half this four year left and so we tried to get them to respond to the proposal last year and they refused. I think we finally got their attention most and there will be no more POs issued to the rest of the year. And so I think we have a better relationship with our two local Walmarts and they are acquiring about how to become a part of a purchasing co-op. Region 20 has, they call it PACE. They would actually opt for this same kind of bid next this number, so I suspect that Walmart will submit proposals to become part of the co-op. But in the meantime, this approval of this proposal will allow the district to continue to do business with Walmart throughout the rest of this fiscal year. And there's also a three-year mutual agreement option to re-up at both parties.
What kind of supplies are we buying from them?
So we buy everything that they offer, whether it be food for our lifestyle class for cooking, for our homemaking to utensils.
Which is pretty much whatever.
Everything that they offer. We don't typically buy all apart from them, we get everybody through some of the other, but it's, it's all the hundred dollars here and there that adds up throughout the year.
So do they have P cards or what, do you take a PO to them?
They do, so POs are an M X check. Not an M X, I'm forgetting that. A check they have to Walmart that a bunch of people would fill out.
So then it is only certain people assigned to this?
They have to go and check out the credentials to purchase through Walmart through the business office.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Goods, sorry, with the exception of campus accounts. So if they have a fundraiser and they want to do, that's in their local fundraiser account, then they can write a check from their local activity account, activity accounts.
But that's just also just one, one person that's assigned to that, correct?
Um, there's two people usually who sign for the check, it's typically the campus principal and the campus secretary that have to sign.
Okay, so there is, okay, I was making sure.
I think there's procedures put in place so that somebody can get our check without knowing and going.
That's what I was trying to, yeah, get to, thank you.
Trustees, I recommend board approval of the two proposals from Walmart Incorporated as presented. Favorable recommendation from superintendent to approve the two proposals from Walmart store number 3279 and store number 5245. Do I have a motion? So move. Have a motion come into favor, Mr. Garza, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Monique Priestess, all in favor?
Aye.
Although, voting fair. All right, item D. The central independent school district will mention delegating authority to superintendent to act in place of the board of trustees during an emergency closure. Mr. Costanza? Yes, sir, trustees, on page 62 in your electronic packet, is a resolution for your consideration tonight, it is essentially the board delegating to me the authority to act in place of the board during this particular emergency closure circumstance. And essentially, what the attempt to do here is that because of the day-to-day uncertainty and the day-to-day changes that this current context is created, it enables me to take action to do things like pay employees who cannot work, to make decisions about whether we pay employees who are asked to come to work for emergency purposes to be paid a premium. For us to consider paying substitutes, particularly our full-time substitutes, some degree of compensation while they're unable to work. To consider calendar adjustments, given that we have, for example, missed Fiesta this year and that the calendar for next year may reflect something different, given that Fiesta is now in November as well as in April, that we might have to make an adjustment to the calendar, given the board has already approved it. So essentially in all those cases, I would be able to consult and directed by this resolution to consult with the board, but would not have to bring these items back to the board as you would normally have to do for the board consideration and take formal action. So it would expedite operational decisions and you're giving me the authority to do that and it very specifically spells out why. And that this is because of the response to the health needs of our families and our community. The board will support all of these future decisions under this authority, which would include continuation of wage payments to all regular employees, contractual or not, salary, non-salary. All those salaried employees are not employees that we're considering paying additionally for any, anytime they're actually on the job. I already wait to employees who need listening. In these particular contexts, it's, it's something that the board can consider because it serves a public purpose, it maintains morale, reduces turnover, it ensures continuity of district staffing so that when schools reopen, we haven't lost a bunch of people. So for all those reasons, the board is, is being asked to consider this resolution this evening. So going down to page two of the resolution 63 in your packet, essentially there are eight things that the board is delegating the authority to act on, meaning of those I've already given examples of. But one is payment of employees. Two is premium payments to those that actually physically are asked to come into work, alter the school calendar if need be, make decisions about employee leave, if they qualify for leave, if they have to use leave, what are the conditions and qualifying circumstances given this new environment we're temporarily in. If I need to apply for waivers of any sort to the agency, then I would not have to have board approval formally to do that and I would consult with the board and then with your direction, act on it expeditiously. And then lastly, when it comes to procurement and executing contracts in the interest of mitigating, preventing, restoring and repairing damages caused to the district, caused to personal property or facilities, that this authority is necessary to prevent delays. And so even in the case of procurement and, and awarding contracts, given the things that we need to, to do as a response to this circumstance, to expedite and give me the authority to do that. And so if you have to answer any questions or look at this a little more closely together if you'd like, this came from our attorney, Walsh Anderson. It is consistent with at least our partner districts in the area who use Walsh Anderson. So it has been recommended through legal for your consideration. It's not something that we came up with on our own.
I think it's, it's a good idea during this crisis. When this crisis is over, then that authority will expire.
Yes, sir.
And we don't know how long that crisis will be. So we, it's, it's not over right now, but I think it's, it's a good idea.
Yes, sir, and I, you know, I'll, I'll give further clarification to ensure that my understanding is once the, the state of emergency is lifted at the state local level, so too is this resolution.
I just want to thank you for bringing this to us, because I know that has been a big concern of mine, to stop the community or stop not getting paid or, but I just, I think Mo and I share the same sentiment, I mean, I'm just speechless and how everyone's just took the ground running. And I'm just so, I had no doubt in anyone that we would miss a week. I mean, it breaks my heart that we're in this situation, breaks my heart that some of these kids that I worry that come to school just to eat, you know, it's the only thing they get, they're, they're being taken care of. And it just means the world to me and it just shows me how much more of a family we are and we do take care of one another, so I greatly appreciate that. I mean, I'm trying not to panic like everyone else here, because I know it's going to be okay. I know our kids are going to be okay, I know our staff is going to be okay because of not only your leadership, but you know, our police department, I know we are probably working extra hard making sure these kids aren't getting in trouble, our child nutrition, I mean, that's just amazing how, you know, they didn't skip the things and the meals, the number of meals we served and it's just, I mean, if I give anyone out, I'm sorry, you know, Miss Sox, Matt, Ashley, everyone from Janitorial's job, so I really, really appreciate this.
Yeah, I guess. You know, they've been loving you every second, all those decisions you guys have done.
Absolutely.
But also just to make sure you take care of yourselves as well.
It is important that, and I know you guys are, you've been communicating and you've seen on social media and all of the communication, you know, obviously the the addition of the marketing and communication team has been guided in this year, given this crisis. Matter of fact, Ashley, when I had a conversation yesterday, I said, could you imagine if we didn't have communications department? What we would have to be going through in addition to just trying to take care of our staff and our kids and do our core business, communication piece of equipment, but also in addition to custodians and police department and you know, our student services and our counselors and our child nutrition team and everybody that's just been mobilized really quickly in providing great quality service. I mean, you got to think about in 72 hours, we went from doing school the way we normally do it to writing curriculum, writing training to deploy online curriculum and by Monday, actually deploying online curriculum pre-K to 12th grade in ECISD, both virtually and in paper format. In 72 hours. And so pulling that off says a lot about the people in our organization. It says a lot about the way we're organized, this organization. And so to me, it affirmed the quality of this organization, the quality of people in the organization. And with your support, these folks have no doubt that they do what they needed to do and that they would be supported to take care of the kids and staff in this community. And what you're acting on tonight is just, you know, putting money for your mouth is essentially in saying, we'll take care of you. You do what you need, you take care of our kids and we're going to take care of you.
No, sir, no, but I, I did, I forgot to share the, I did see Whitney's post about you know, hosting a museum conference with her students. And I actually got to witness it firsthand with Mrs. Delgado, nothing as average teacher and I swear even she made me feel like it was going to be okay, that we were going to, she reassured the kids and you know, she's also my neighbor and I was like, I couldn't thank her enough on my thing because that's what these kids need from our seniors to our freshmen to, and also I shared with you at Legacy, they're still interacting with the kids, you know, like St. Patrick's Day, post a picture of you and reading or, and I didn't realize who was posting this and I actually shared a picture of my walk this morning and she would love if any, if any one of y'all would share, you know, I'll, I'll share whatever post of the day it is. Just to show that we're, we're, we're human. We're just like everyone else and I hope Mr. Costanza agrees with me and it's okay with him that we do that, but I just feel like we need to, you know, I don't, I'm proud to be a board member, but I don't ever, ever want to intimidate anyone, not a parent first. And I want everyone to know we're here to support them and be, we're in the same shoes that they are, they're in the same situation, so.
I've been sharing on my page and I've definitely, the response I've been seeing from all the material we've all gathered, the reports and sharing with you two has been very, they're, they're thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you for, for responding to these, so. I'm grateful.
Very, very grateful.
Even getting more is, is a big part of the battle. It's been awesome.
Sir, trustees, I recommend board approval of ECISD board resolution, wage payments during school closure, code 19 as presented. We have a recommendation from superintendent to approve ECISD board resolution, wage payments during school closure. Can I move?
So move.
Motion, go. Then, will be, second?
Second.
Will be, our angles, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. All right. Will be, send agenda with any of the trustees, like anything schools can make a senate with them. We have a motion to approve. Will be, second? Move, then, figure, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Looking paired. I can make the turn. All in favor?
Aye.
We're done?